Good morning. Calling the order of the regular meeting. Especially, obviously, this week.
Please join me in honoring our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great father for which it stands, one nation, and with God, he is his own, with the victory and the success throughout.
Motion approved. One second.
Vice Chair Miller?
Aye.
Director Russo?
Here.
Director Segovia?
Aye.
And Chair Walsh?
Aye. Public testimony is permitted at this time only on consent calendar items and other matters not listed on the posted agenda, but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the agency to state law to give us the agency from taking action on any items not listed on the posted agenda. Public comment on that is based on the posted agenda will be taken at the time each item is called for the study.
You ready?
We have a whole list.
Thank you. Tom Sitten? You're up.
Well, I'm going to go first. Just finishes now fifteen minutes ago. That started limited to a...
Five minutes.
Oh, Jesus. Tom said a concern there. Are the microphone working? So I can hear anything.
It's good. Oh, can you turn it a bit? Hit the red button. No?
Testing. Why do you?
Hit the red button. There we go.
Test.
There we go.
Tom, you got a new job now. Turn him on.
I was gonna say welcome. Welcome to the table. Anyway, Tom Sitten, certain neighbors. Nothing personal or personal about any of this. However, we've all have been indoctrinated by our government for our entire lives. We have been taught to worship money that controls and drives each and one of us. It is easy for us and our corporations to be driven to evil and to commit to crime and crimes for monetary gains. Barwa and the CSD are run and controlled by our government. We all know our government is in a state of corruption and is being run by administrative law with tons of liars. As long as our government remains in control, this project will take place and with or without any of our permission. We wrote a letter to the editor in Grizzly. Please read it. We have a paper here. I'll give you all one. It is very informative and we'd like to give you a copy and we have a copy of our flyer also. And you can pick that up right there. Do you have a free newspaper? Who wants one? A few men, a few months back, Barwa had a free taco bet. We heard after the water purification demonstration, none of you or any none of the Barwa staff would drink the water. Hence, the local phrase, drinking shit water. Believe it, believe this. It comes from a very, very reliable source. We have an offer beneath us that is only, that is our only water source. This has always and will always be our only water source in the Big Bear Valley. We changed. We changed something that works. Why change something that still works? Why waste millions and millions of taxpayers' dollars? We still do not know, or may never know, all of the ramifications or truth about the existing operating water programs in Southern California. Before and then before, I know you guys are gonna do this project anyway. Before an engineer set of plants is finalized, we do not want the solar panels on the south side. Look at the solar panels we have in existence right now. Terrible aesthetics and, I said, terrible aesthetics and brings harm to our wildlife. Please install the solar panels on the roof of the back of one of the buildings or bring us some builder and put, put it on the hidden side of the structure so we can't see it. Our property values will not devalue as much if the solar panels are not put on the south side. And if CSD allows you to landscape that front lot right there and pave it and, and pave the road to that so they can access their water wells. It will make us all better and it will be better for all of us because we will not lose the values of our property. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Steve Flutke?
Good morning. Again, also in certain neighbor, I live directly across the street. And I would welcome you all to, when you walk out this front door this afternoon, maybe this morning, later on this morning, this afternoon. Take a look at the solar panels that are right there and ask yourself if you want those across the street of your house, in your view. Guessing the answer would be no by most of you. So, that being said, I talked to David about a few options. And after consideration, I don't mind any of it, to be honest with you. I don't, I don't think that's a good place with solar panels. I think it will cause me and my neighbors great financial harm. And, you know, causes to lose a lot of property value. And, you know, the views that we look at every day and get to look at, you know, sunsets around there every night. They're beautiful. And so we just don't want to look at it, honestly. And so I would encourage all the board members to carefully consider another location for the solar panels. I understand we need it and, and I do want to thank you guys. Honestly, Barwa is a great neighbor and always has been. And, you know, you guys do your best to keep the smell away and honestly, in the last five, six years, it's gotten way better. So, congrats on that and thank you. Because, you know, you guys are great neighbors and, you know, we appreciate that, but we want to continue to keep it that way. So if we can, if you find another place for the solar panels, that would be really wonderful. Thank you.
Charles Brister?
Good morning. I'm Charlie Brister. I'm a lakefront owner for thirty years. Eagle Point actually where the water is really, really level, so. Lights down ten or fifteen feet, we're two or three hundred feet from my water market shore. I'm also an MWD past director for eight years. I'm gonna, would like to talk to you about what I believe, we believe is the resulting amount of lake increase a year from this project. And I've given you a sheet that shows that. And I'll just say the average over the last thirty-eight years of lake level has been about eight feet down. So that would allow the surface area to be twenty-five hundred eighty-nine feet. So that's a number we gotta remember. So, surface area, if you look at the inflow of two thousand acre feet from the project. And I'll take you to the second page of this document. The allocation is, I believe it, is shade pond is gonna take eighty acre feet. The marsh evaporation is gonna take twelve. The length of evaporation, four hundred seventy-six. The golf course irrigation, a hundred twenty. The sand canyon recharge, three eighty. That leaves nine hundred and thirty-two feet actually going into the lake to be used to increasingly the level. So given that number, then you have to divide it by the surface acreage area. For twenty-five eighty-nine, you divide those two, it comes to about a little over a third of a foot increase per year. I converted that to inches. So four point four inches is how much we're gonna gain a year by doing this project. And then you look at that against the average, the average now over thirty-eight years, evaporation is thirty-nine inches per year. So it's, it's about only a tenth recovery of what actually evaporates from this lake. The lake has overflowed in the last, well, other years we haven't, or eighty years, but about every nine or ten years, it actually overflowed. But I don't think that's gonna happen anymore. And if we're successful to get the lake level up, Barwa Municipal Water Company has rights to any water between full and four feet down in the summer and full and eight, six feet down in the winter. Now, they haven't exercised that. That's over and above in Lula. Lula water, we pay them a couple million bucks a year. They don't really want to take the water because if it goes down, they'll lose thirty percent. But they haven't taken any of that yet, but they have a huge catch base now. They've just built down below and they're getting ready for the water as soon as we increase it. Well, I don't know. We'll ever, we'll ever get to the point within six feet. However, right now, we're at six and a half feet. So we'll probably be in that zone here in another two weeks, I hope. So that's, that's a concern. So we're gonna, we're gonna spend seventy-five to a hundred million dollars for the studies and development, instruction and maintenance of everything. That's gonna result in EDU rates doubling in this community. Every resident and every business will be hit. It'll be doubled in five years and then it'll be flat and go up, continue with COLA. It's just out of control. You're spending that kind of money. We're spending that kind of money to do this. And you still have a lot of hurdles to overcome. DIR approval. All the environmental impacts are still out there. Getting water to the marsh. I understand the airport won't let you cross their property. Nutrient taking the water, that will be a problem. The well water impacts across the pond skin. I guess if the wells are within X number of feet of the lake, they aren't gonna be able to be used. You're gonna have to pipe water there. And then there's gotta be other things that will probably pop up after you get more input on the environmental stuff. So I'm asking you, please consider just killing the project. Deal with, with what you're gonna have to do for the wastewater, but don't, don't spend all this effort, time and money, especially to put it in our lake. Thank you very much. Anyone have questions or anything? Thank you very much.
Joyce?
Hello, my name is Joyce and I'm a long time resident. My family's been here since nineteen sixty-two. And we are on the well. And so I have a little bit of experience with what the state is, is trying to do by taking away our wells as much as they can. They're trying to take over our water in our control. And I pay every month on my tax, on every year on my taxes for all this water stuff. And I can't afford any of it. I don't know what everybody's thinking. Inflation is so high, we are not being properly compensated or eating. So we don't have proper representation for where our funds are going. We can't afford this. We don't want any new residents up here that you're paying for other people to come up here and making us pay for it through these projects. Now, when we started this meeting, we pledged allegiance to this flag of the United States of America, to the republic. We are a republic and as a republic, we have rights. We are not a democracy. It's not. You guys deciding for us, we the people say no. No to all these projects that are costing us money, all the, the extra expenses for waste management and stuff for new people to come up here, for the immigrants or wherever we're moving, we want accountability to it all. And I pay a ton of money on taxes. I am a retired. And I cannot afford eating more taxes. So if you want to do whatever project, you've gotta work within your budget. Period. No new taxes. Number one. I also want to make sure that all residents of Big Bear are able to keep their well rights. And you, you took a pledge to, to constitution. And as you're doing that, you're not a part, you have to take care of the people of Big Bear, not the establishment of Washington, not the establishment of the state and not even the establishment of the county. We have our rights, our constitutional rights, and we want you to fight for our constitutional rights. Period. That's what you're hired to do. And us here, we don't want this project. It's not for the benefit of Big Bear. It's for the detriment of Big Bear. Also, these solar panels, where's the science that proves that their efficiency will be worth the cost? So I know that they have all these scientific studies, but if you don't understand the money monopoly game, you know that they are faking science. So I want to see your independent studies that prove that these solar panels will be effective for the costs that you're putting into them for the longevity, how you're gonna clean them, how you're gonna keep the birds out of them, how the reflectiveness is gonna hurt our environment. Also, these chemtrails, when are you gonna address these chemtrails? We're sick of them. We don't want them spraying us. We have a right not to have these chemtrails spraying us, not to have all this storm, this, this, spraying these chemicals to create storm. And we don't want that. We want that stopped. Also, the spending of the, for the agenda, we want you to start stating it for our rights of Big Bear. We don't want our money going because of the state or the counties telling us we have to do it. Okay, we are our own community here. Also, if you want to have extra water for the lake, then what you could do is stop allowing ski slopes to take the water out of the lake. Give them this water and make them pay for it. Because isn't that what it's for? So the lake can have extra water so that the ski slopes can take it? Well, they're making a ton of profit off of us. Let them pay for it. Also, Baltimore Lake gets a lot of runoff coming down Van Duzen when we have rains. You can divert that to Big Bear Lake really easy. It's right in the center. Comes down Mount Street, it heads towards the lake. When it comes down Van Duzen and it cuts across toward the creek, it heads to Baltimore Lake. Divert that to Big Bear Lake. That could be part of your solution. And we can't afford this inflation. It's an idea. I don't have it researched, but I have seen a study that was done years ago that says that the water underneath the airport is separate from the water on both sides of the lake. It's old water that's been there and it's different. It was a study that I found when I was doing some research. It was really fascinating. Study, have you ever read that study? You're making all these water decisions. Have you read it? Then you understand. There's a point right there underneath the airport where you might be able to make some impact and divert some of the water to Big Bear Lake. I don't really know. All I know is that I can't afford this project. I don't want to pay for this project.
Thank you. Kelly Olson?
I'm sure. Sorry. I'm normally at school where we, and this is a little different for me, but when I, when I understood that there's all these things going, issues going on, I decided to come check it out. So I wasn't really expected to speak today. But I found out that there's going to be a twenty-two point five percent increase this year in our bill as well as the negative eighteen percent for your budget. And as most people think, there are people who are on fixed incomes. And that's really, you know, hitting them hard because of our electricity bill has like tripled and our gas, our gasoline and our food. And it's just, it's too much for our, our, not only our economy, but, you know, just on Big Bear. It's hard to survive up here anyway without people having two to three jobs just to make it. And I just wanted to state that and this whole playing god with our waters is just getting out of control. So I know some of you guys are crazy, so I want to think about that.
Are there any, anybody else that wants to speak during public comment? Right, Randy?
I'm five years old. I'm working with some friends with him, Mark. Yeah, so. Mr. Miller, I just wanted to congratulate you on five years of service to Barwa. Under, for the last five years, a lot has been accomplished. I have an entire list. I, I could read if you would like to do. If you don't want me to, I won't. But I will just highlight a couple of things. Obviously, through this, through, underneath his direction as the board, as part of the board. We've had a lot of grants awarded to the agency. We've entered into a lot of partner MOUs with different partnering agencies. We established what they call an UPTHAP program, tuition reimbursement for the employees, safety incentives. We've done connection fee policies, waivers, deductions and refunds. We issued, we entered into lease agreements. Employee, employee employer relation policies. We've done a lot of stuff under, for human resources, under constructive doctrine receipts, organizational structure, classification studies. The OPEP contributions for, under operations, we've done a state upgrade, sewer flow project, headworks grid project. We have the replenish project, force, such hauling service contracts. So underneath your direction, we've done a lot of different projects and there's a list of many, many more. I'm just not gonna spend the time because obviously the time is of the essence, but I just wanted to congratulate you on your five years of service and thank you for your service to this agency and our community.
Keep your coffee. Let me just be real quick. Well, thank you, Dave. Surprise, it's been a quick five years and we're still friends.
Yeah, thanks.
Now, Dave, Dave, you know, you run a little high organization here and staff has been great and it's really your efforts and your leadership as far as this point. You know, when I took this position, fine, I took over for Liz Harris. I'm sure many people, I think, know Liz. And she said, oh, we don't, Barbara, we just, you know, we have a budget once a year and maybe a repair here and there, maybe an HR issue, but you really don't do too much. But she was obviously completely wrong with that because we've gone a long way in the last five years from this, you know, from replenish Big Bear to the solar projects and everything in between. We spent a lot of work, we've put in a lot of effort. We run a great organization and it's been some fun work to do. We've done a lot of public hearings and a lot of, a lot of, a lot of, probably been my whole retirement life. And this is a really good board to serve on. So thank you and thank you to staff for, thank goodness it's as incredible as it is.
Thank you.
Thank you for not bringing your own copy. There are copies out on the table in front of the agenda. If you want to follow along. And Candy?
Yeah, just wanted to welcome Candy to Public City Big Bear Lake. Is, was promoted by city council to the governing board. I just wanted to welcome you to our, our board and, and Barwa. And we look forward to working with you for the next twenty years.
Thank you.
And vice seat, budget presentation in this session.
So for the budget presentation, Christine is actually gonna go over our budget for the next coming year and then some forecast and so forth. Take it away, Christine.
Good morning. So today we're going to talk about budget projections and proposal. I start with the projected performance service for your twenty twenty-four. So we're going to have a new budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. And then we're going to have a budget forecast for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. So let's start with the projected, sorry, projected performance for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. So during the year, there are changes to the budget and those changes include carryover appropriations and new appropriations. Carryover appropriations sold three point one million. With capital expenditure being three plus over three million of that and replenish Big Bear project and the grid system we have being the largest capital investments that we're carrying over. Operating expenses carryovers were just over forty-eight thousand. And those included appropriations for the clarifier, three close line upgrade and maintenance, the coven supply valve and installing its electrical maintenance. New appropriations during the year are approximately a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. We have a new appropriation of forty-five thousand for the administrative building roof replacement. And as some of you will recall, the total allocation for that roof was just under a hundred and forty-three thousand. Sixty-one thousand was reallocated from other capital projects. And we had an insurance payment of thirty-one thousand. We also had new appropriations in operating expenses of just over eighty-three thousand. Salaries and wages included a reclassification of the senior management analyst for secretary to administrative services manager for secretary. And repairs and replacements included the force main investigation. Let's go into the financial summary. Cash and housing needed fund balances are expected to end fifty-five, five hundred and thirty-three thousand and higher than certified budget. This includes capital replacement reserves for current capital at one point two million and future at just over five point seven million. So when they said that five hundred and thirty-three thousand, well, higher operating income, higher net non-operating income and expense and higher connection fees will go into further detail on the next slides. The increase in wasted total fees are a result of an increase in waste hauler activity. In addition to an insurance pay reinforcement for the administrative building group, other revenues include solar energy credits. And operating expenses are expected to come in slightly higher than budget at an overall public office. Higher net non-operating income expense of two hundred and twenty-one thousand. Interest income increased as a result of higher than anticipated interest earned. Interest expense is higher due to an accounting entry. And the other non-operating expenses are looking to come in slightly higher at about five thousand or two percent. Higher connections are primarily a result of the new campaign in which accounts for sixty-two new connections. The fifteen-year average is forty-six connections and the ten-year average is fifty-five connections, not including while they move in charge. Now we can watch the proposed new budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. We'll start with the operating budget. Based on established rate increases, operating revenues increased by eighteen percent. During the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget process, sewer user rates were established for fiscal year twenty twenty-four through fiscal year twenty twenty-eight. Subject to review and affirmation by the governing board. Based on operational and capital needs as well as reserve requirements, the base rate is proposed to remain as established for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Operating expenses increased by this percent. And we'll discuss the variances in the following slides. This represents the largest variance that affects the budget. Let's go into further detail on this. Salaries and benefits increased ten percent with salaries and wages increasing at nine percent. The proposed CPI COLA increase of four point seven percent is based on the average annual change in CPI. While the COLA will be incorporated into the budget, approval of the COLA is at the governing board's discretion and brought before the board in April or May. To manage the increases in the COLA adjustment, merit adjustments will be capped at three point three percent versus five percent allowable. We are proposing to add a full-time administrative physician and reduce the human resources position to thirty-six hours per week. While the addition of the administrative position will be budgeted, prior to recruiting the physician, it will be brought between the, before the administrative committee and then the governing board for approval. Based on board approved calculation method, using the annual average CPI change, a four point seven percent COLA is included in the proposed budget. Based on board approved calculation method, using the annual average CPI change, a four point seven percent COLA is included in the proposed budget. This demonstrates the impact of the addition of a full-time administrative position and the reduction of hours for the human resources position. These changes result in a two point five three percent difference in salaries and benefits. Benefits increased twelve percent. Per the twenty twenty four actuarial valuation, medical premiums are expected to increase by six percent in fiscal year twenty twenty five. The increase in retirement and OPEP contributions is a result of both plans experiencing a lower rate of return than what was forecast. The forecasted rate of return for pension contributions was lowered from seven point five percent to six point eight percent. At June thirtieth, twenty twenty two, the funded position of pension for classic members was seventy five point three percent. And the funded position of pension for PEPR members was eighty nine point eight percent. The forecasted rate of return for OPEP contributions lowered from six point nine five percent to six point one five percent. The funded ratio for OPEP contributions was sixty six percent at June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. And again, the proposed, the proposed added full-time administrative position would increase benefits.
Result of them over projecting like how Subsara, the retirement, is that they over project their revenues for this time and.
Yes, they projected higher than what they came in at. Yeah, so how first projected on high, projected revenues, investment income. Higher than what it actually came in and same with the OPEP, the other possible ways.
Thank you.
Contractual services, other decreases by seventeen percent. This year twenty twenty four, there was a carryover spending of forty two thousand dollars. This is partially offset by appropriations made out of twenty thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty five. For an arc flash study and electrical preventative maintenance. Contractual services professional decreased sixteen percent. We took a lot, a look at the legal services line item and looked at the ten year average. And decreased the line by thirty thousand to be more in line with the recent tenure average. Permitting fees increased by six percent. State water resource control board permit fees are estimated to increase by eight point three nine percent. This increase is partially offset by a decrease in EOP fees. Every other fiscal year, the agency is required to conduct an onsite assessment by third party assessor. This assessment does not occur fiscal year twenty twenty five. Insurance expenses estimated to increase by eighteen percent. General liability and property insurance estimates are based on the annual CPI. And workers' compensation insurance is estimated based on a percentage of payroll and prior experience. Other operating expenses increased by twenty three percent. Largest variance in this line is education and training. During fiscal year twenty twenty four, staff did not attend all of the budgeted training opportunities. But we have included those training opportunities in the fiscal year twenty twenty five budget. Capital expenditures. This year twenty twenty five capital expenditures are estimated to be five point nine million. With the largest capital investment in replenish Big Bear at four point six billion. Now, while this total may not change, the, the projects may, and I'm gonna hand this over to David.
So we are, we are evaluating an opportunity to fill in and we have the sixteen inch fours made that comes from the civic senate, that comes from the city. We've been increasing the number of, of holes in that line. And so we have been exploring the opportunity to go in and line that, line the line, line the line. There we go, line the line and it looks like we're gonna probably need about a thousand linear feet to line, we're gonna line up about a thousand linear feet. To deal with some of the, the deposition of the line at the high point near Snowplay. So we're gonna be probably putting a liner in there, hopefully this summer. So the oxidation ditch wall rehab project was originally slated to take place this year. We're probably going to say trade out a project and probably end up doing that lot, that rehab of that line instead. Just because the number of events that we've had in the last couple, last year or so. So that project also will be re-budgeted in the coming, in the coming years. I think it's twenty twenty eight that we have a, a budget for some asphalt that will reallocate that money towards that project. And so we're basically looking at projects that are more pertinent at this moment and needing better, more attention. So that, that's why we're deciding to change things around a little bit. But this issue with the, the line came up again this last couple of weeks. And that's why I told Christine to go ahead and leave it in the budget as the oxidation wall rehab, but we're going to reallocate that money towards a different project and it will be included in the final budget later on.
Dave, is that, is that them, you're just, you're gonna lift the seven sixty two and kind of decide that's the amount you can put spin for that project? Or you have an estimate at this point in time of the risk of cost?
I don't have an estimate, but it's gonna be in that range. In, in that range and I don't have an estimate yet, we're working on those estimates. I do have WSC working on, working up a, a cost estimate for the lining of the, of the line. I keep saying that, the lining of that line, so we're working, they're working up a cost estimate for me, so that way I can have something a little more concrete to, to present to the board. Along with a set of plans that we'll, we'll be working on and hopefully we'll have little plans done. And we can bid this out before summer and then actually have the lining completed before the end of the September, October timeframe.
That, that last two weeks, we're about the second failure this last three.
It's actually the third.
Third.
A third failure that we've had. And again, it, it has to do with the H two S in the line, there's, there, it's, it's actually at a high point. So the H two S has been eating away at that ductal iron pipe. And over time, it's been, the line's been in there, the sixteen inch line's been in there for about fifty years. And just over time, it starts to eat away at that ductal iron pipe. So a liner lining that section that is at the high point will prevent that from occurring again. And again, we're just gonna, the, the idea is to blow a liner inside of it and use the pipe itself for a framework for this new liner that's gonna actually be the new pipe itself. So, right, you bet.
Before you get into your part, Segovia is new to the board.
Yes.
So I don't know if she's aware, what we've been going through and essentially what you're talking about. So if you could kind of fill her in a little.
Sure.
And some of the people here may not.
There's a little, a little more detail, so the, there's a sixteen inch line that comes from what we call the LPS station. That's located near Garston, that the coal sack Garston, so we have a pump station down there. During high flow conditions, and so when it rains, the city sends a lot of what we call INI, right, to our plant. And so a lot, a lot of rainwater to our plant and so they'll pump and our big pumps will kick on pressurizing our, the line. On a normal basis, we run one pump and it flows about half full. When that big pump kicks on, the hundred, hundred and fifty horsepower pump kicks on, it, it flows full. And it's sits there between seventy, eighty PSI. Well, that gives it more opportunity, any, any kind of problems with the pipe will show up at that point. It happens to be at this high point where all of this gas, H two S gas is settling and eating away at the pipe. And so that's why we, we are continuing to have these little events where we pop a hole somewhere and then we have to go in and, and do a repair. So we've done three repairs so far at that location. We did do a, a investigation on the line, videotaped the line as far as we could get. Because it, there are high points and low points and water tends to be trapped in the line at that point where there's high points at low points. And so we've done an investigation as far as we could with that, given the, the situation. And we've evaluated the location, we didn't see anything too critical at the point, at the time, but just fifteen feet away from there. We, we put the, the video camera in for this investigation, we pop up. Kind of interesting, but it is what it is. So that's why more recently than when that happened, we were like, okay, enough is enough, we're gonna have to actually do something about it. We're gonna have to align this, this line, so. And you know, the, the water loss that we lose is not often, we can, we can actually see it, you know, the, we can actually see it on our, on our pumps. And our, and so we, we know when it happens and then we shut it down and then that helps us not lose that water. Most of the time that what we're, what we're losing is lots and lots of rainwater. It does obviously have some sewer in, you know, some sewer water in there, but we try and keep that to a minimum. And this last one was, I think, estimated below a thousand gallons for this last event.
Thank you, I, I am aware of what's been happening, our city manager's done a good job of letting city council know when these things have happened.
I figured he'd be decent, he keeps everybody going for him.
Any more questions? The financial summary for fiscal year twenty twenty five. Cash and designated fund balances are expected to end two million over projected fiscal year twenty twenty four. This includes capital replacement reserves for fiscal year twenty twenty six of just under two hundred and forty eight thousand. And future capital of seven point four million. This year twenty twenty five, in this period, the agency has high monthly strong debt service coverage, it's five point four times. And minimum, minimum reserve credit limits are there. Let's talk about the proposed five year forecast, fiscal year twenty twenty five through twenty twenty, twenty twenty nine. The economic outlook. So when we're looking at the inflation forecast, we look at the survey of professional forecasters, the regional CPM. And the construction cost index published by the Asian News Record. All of which are lower this time of year versus a year ago. Operating expenses, not including depreciation, from fiscal year twenty twenty five, six percent to ten percent in fiscal year twenty twenty nine. With a fourteen percent on average. And rate adjustments are eighteen percent for fiscal year twenty twenty five through twenty twenty eight and forecast at four and a half percent for fiscal year twenty twenty nine. Wanted to take a little time to talk about the replenished figure project. Full project cost from the beginning of the project is eighty six point seven million. This includes one point nine million in financing costs and twenty two million in contingency. When working with the EPA on the WIPLO, EPA wanted to make sure that there was sufficient contingency worked into the whole project cost. EPA's experience has been that other agencies did not have sufficient contingency and project costs came in much higher than expected. The WIPLO amount cannot be increased once agreed upon, so these agencies were forced to find funding elsewhere and likely at a higher cost. The RBD project team feels that there is sufficiency, sufficient contingency worked into the total project cost. We currently have state grants awarded of five million and federal grants awarded of eleven point eight million. We've submitted applications for two additional federal grants, the EPA stack grant at two point five million and the USBR title sixteen. At nine point one million. This budget includes only awarded grants. Debt service for WIPLO is expected to be fifty seven point five million but can be up to fifty nine point seven. Revenue bonds are eleven point four million and the project is expected to go online in October twenty twenty seven, which is fiscal year twenty twenty eight. Annual charges for fiscal year twenty twenty five through fiscal year twenty twenty seven are set to bill required reserves. Annual charges for fiscal year twenty twenty eight and twenty twenty nine are set to cover operating expenses and annual debt service. Current state grants are expected to be expended in fiscal year twenty twenty five. Federal grants are capped at twenty five percent of construction costs. The current federal grants awarded are fourteen percent of project cost. When including grants that have been applied for and not get awarded, federal grants will reach the twenty five percent cap. If the grant applications are selected and awarded, the WIPLO amount will be reduced. Our WIPLO team are exploring more state grant opportunities. If more state grants are awarded, the revenue bonds and or WIPLO amounts could be reduced. The replenished figure expenses, operating expenses include general operating and maintenance, water monitoring and nutrient offset. Fiscal year twenty twenty eight is a personal year, October through June. WIPLO debt service for fiscal year twenty twenty five through twenty twenty seven is interest only through construction. Fiscal year twenty twenty eight through twenty twenty nine is the full debt service, interest and principal. Fiscal year twenty twenty six bond debt service is a personal year. Total RBD capital expenditures for fiscal year twenty twenty five through twenty twenty eight is seventy seven million. And all RBD capital expenditures will be paid using grant funding and nets. Revenue of loan to Marla and RBD combined for fiscal year, yes.
Realizing you don't have a crystal ball.
I do not.
But also listening to the governor either argue that we're not seventy three billion in the whole of the state. How much money can you really anticipate with state renting?
You know, the, the state, they have a state revolving fund that that they have a loan program and they have a grant program in that state revolving fund. And we're going to be applying for a, a grant through that program to, for the entire amount that we are going to include with the loan amount through the state. Now, obviously, we don't anticipate getting all of that money, but we're going to make an application for as much as possible, as much as allowable by the state. If the state revolving fund is a low interest loan, has a low, low interest loan program as well. That is, they, you know, they have, I think it's like either one or two percent the interest rate, but it's a really arduous process to go through then. So if you elect to use their grant process, then you have a better opportunity of, of being granted a grant. You actually have to make a designation that you're not gonna pay the state loan program. So that's what we, we plan on doing is applying for a state grant. I don't know, you know, what the governor overall, the, the status, you know, there are different numbers out there, when it comes to the governor says one, the, you know, the. Yeah, the legislative analyst has come up with a different number, I'm not sure who's right. I haven't analyzed the numbers myself, but I think there's a, a, a pretty good opportunity to apply for state grants. And hopefully we'll, we'll end up getting a grant, additional state grant, which is what we're going for at this point.
And when you say that twenty five percent, up to twenty five percent can be federalized, right? Money coming from the state, which was originally federal money.
That wouldn't work. Yeah, still announced, so it, it has to be, it has to be the right grant money. Because if they have a, a federal allocation to that grant program, then obviously it would still, it would, you know, it's tainted money and therefore it wouldn't apply. So we definitely have to make sure that we're applying for money that comes directly from the state. You know, they have all kinds of. You know, they have all kinds of uh of ways around that uh kind of stuff, so we'll, you know. You know, uh uh ways around those kind of deal. We'll trade money, do different things to to ensure that we get the right money.
Yeah, one more quick. We've talked in the past, and we probably. We talked in the past about potential additional revenue sources from other agencies and San Ana Regional Water Hall Control Board and. You know, I I mean, at some point in time, once the plant is up and running, we are going to be exploring those. So I don't know if it's worth mentioning what potential revenue sources are. Uh we could do with this, but I know we've had casual conversations about it, but.
Yeah, we we've actually, uh if you're talking about local participation.
Or and and regional too.
Okay, so there are um, obviously, there's a lot of interest in this uh in this project. Whereas there are plenty, and uh we happen to be at the top of the the water, the uh water system, the San Ana watershed. And because of that, there were a lot of uh agencies down the hill. Hence why we ended up with five million dollars in grants, because there's a lot of agencies very interested in our project like this that will allow for additional releases out of the lake. Uh that eventually end up in the San Ana River. Uh and so there's a lot of interest into this into this project from people down the hill. To recharge aquifers um in the in the inland empire. That being said, those are decisions that actually made by M W D, not by this agency. We are, we stop basically where we um where we let water out uh of our pipe. Um a- as per plan, so it would be have to be something that M W D would pursue in the in the future if they wanted to do something like that. There are definitely other agencies that have approached um N W D and Barwa with regard to that, this additional water. But it has to be something that that uh M W D, because they are the lake manager, uh Tik Tok. Bars. In the valley, there's a lot of beneficiaries to the project, uh including M W D, the city. Uh C S D, D W P, um the ski resort, just a lot of other people that benefit from this project. Uh a fuller lake brings more people up here, um and that increases, um you know, visitor, the visitor base. Increases taxes that come into the into the uh valley, so those are big benefits overall. Um when it comes to the tax base, then there are, you know, additional lake per for the lake permits. When the lake is fuller, they already know that there's more lakes, lake permits sold, so there might be an opportunity there as well. Uh but again, that's an M W D thing to uh to administer um. Um far as um, you know, additional revenue coming in, the, you know, the hope is to. To um tap that visitor base as well somehow through. Well, an additional program to tap that addition, that visitor base. They account for about forty percent of our flow, so we would we would prefer this not just be on our rate pair. But prefer this to be on uh 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 the group that contributes to Barwa's flow. So sixty percent comes from our residents, that makes sense, forty percent comes from visitors. It might be a, uh there's obviously some additional opportunity to tap that other, that other um, that other uh revenue source. The reason that we have to show rates that we're showing right now on the screen for our residents is because. W B A requires us to have the rate structures in place prior to receiving a loan. To ensure that we can support the law. So just like if you had a home loan. And you couldn't show that you have, uh I'm gonna get that new job, I'm gonna get that raise. Obviously, that wouldn't, um you know, no loan, no loan agency would allow for that to happen. So we had to present something that we could um with, that we had in concrete. And that's why we put together a five-year rate structure that showed the rates that we're we're presenting in the budget. Um and that had been presented to our member agencies uh for adoption. Um so. Though um that's why you see what you see, we're not, you know, we we would like to see the additional revenue coming from. The other beneficiaries of the project as well. Those are um still in those uh. Those details are still in negotiation. Um and they're, and the reason, you know, obviously, we don't need, we're not in operation right now. So those people that benefit from our project far as. C S D getting additional water to recharge the the basin, D W P or additional lake level, all those things. We haven't produced any water, so we know that we can't go and say, oh, well, help us with the cost of this project just yet. We won't be able to do that until we put the co- the the project uh into um production of the water. And that's why we think that that a lot of these other agencies. Uh and you know, will find a method to tap that other base and and help us with uh contributing towards the project at that time. So we know that those deals, those deals, those agreements are coming in the future. Um and um that's what we're gonna pursue um as that comes along. The that's the reason why we we've always said that the contribution from these other benefi- beneficiaries will be uh toward O and M. Because once we start operating it, that's when O and M comes into play and that day. We could start to um gain some of that additional revenue sources. And then, of course, uh that would lead to us having to uh maybe not having to implement the last rate in uh. Rate increase um the at the final year.
And and I, and the reason why I bring that up is because, you know, you know, I'm an avid skier and this year we had three inches of snow. Up until about January thirty.
Yeah.
Which means when you're skiing on Lake Wolden.
Correct.
And I don't know what the future is gonna hold, but you know, if it does trend, continue to trend downward. Then that could have a huge impact on, you know, this this water doesn't go into the lake, where there's huge impact that we're finding in the future. Yeah, I mean, I mean, this is the first year since I've been up here, seventeen years of um weird, the, you know. The local joke at the ski hills were measuring snow and width and not inches this year because they were blowing as much snow. You know, as they possibly could, people have skied, so it's probably one of the worst years we've had. Um so I just, you know, you don't stress that, but the long-term benefits of this program, whoever the beneficiary is, I mean, there's a lot of beneficiaries in this. Just other than than Barwa, which other people that benefit for a very long time in the future.
Well, I mean, just think about it, from from Barwa's perspective, we don't really have a benefit to this project. Right? Just if you just look at Barwa as a whole, this is just a more expensive method of disposal. It's the right thing to do because we're keeping the water on the mountain, but that's all this is for us. We can go go down the Cern and keep disposable water down the Cern, put it in a di- in a in a offset aquifer. And not not recapture two thirds of the water that we use up here. And send it off, continue to send it off the hill. I I for one, as a resident of this valley, know that that's not the right thing to do. They, this project and a project like this has been in the uh was in the original uh J P A formation documents. To do a recycle water project. This has been bought a a bought a project for, you know, obviously, almost fifty years. They've been thinking about a project. This is the first time that we've gotten to this place in this valley where we have a project on the table. Ready to fire away and moving forward that will benefit this valley beyond belief. Not just because of the lake level, but because of the water sustainability issues that we foresee and that every other drought agency. In this valley, in this, not only in this valley, but in state California in four seasons. Just to mention, I have a uh a little. This is a list. And a depiction of all the different agencies that are doing projects just like us. I I had, I didn't count, but I would say there's probably a good thirty to forty different agencies all throughout California. That are doing the projects just like this, whether they put it into a lake, they spread it in the spreading ground. Or they're injecting it back into the into the water table, they're all doing it. So it's, this is not new. They have established regulations for, you know, injection. We have a different, little different situation. We're put into a lake and we have uh high, a little higher requirements than they do. To put down from putting into a lake because of the T M D Ls. And the waterfall in a lake is so good that we have to meet those requirements that are is already in the lake. So this um, the the water quality is very pristine in our lake, it comes from, you know, the runoff from our, from the snow melt. And so we're trying to, we have to meet those uh requirements. So I just wanted to 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 show you, and I'd be happy to pass out a copy of this to the boards, that that way, they have a copy. And when people ask them, why would we do a project like this, who who else is doing it? This is a list of everybody that is doing it. Uh and in addition, by the way, I've just put up this for, you know, just for the board that that. The, there's a fluent that comes into our our and it's a little bit, uh it's a little bit uh not as cloudy. As um the water that uh that would normally come in, because there's a lot of rainwater, but that's our fluent, that's what's coming into our plan. The second one is what's leaving our plan and going down to the Cern. And the third is coming out of the the uh treatment system that we're typing currently right now. So when you wanna know what what the water would look like after reverse osmosis, you bet. Now, I would, please, don't anybody drink that water. And the reason I'm saying that is because it has not been disaffected. This has just gone through the reverse osmosis process. Um and there's a U V disinfection piece that has to be added, so that's why you, I would tell you, don't drink it. Nobody drank it at the pilot. I would never drink that at the pilot because there are still. Um there are still those bugs that are still in there that could make you very sick, so please, nobody come over, please don't drink that. But that's, but I just wanted to show you what a reverse osmosis looks like. It's proven technology, it's been proven for years. Um and I just wanted to give you a demonstration of what it looks like.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Can I ask a question? Are you concerned or do you find it concerning that these other beneficiaries aren't jumping on board? To help with the project, because it seems like the ski resort is a big beneficiary of it. So what would make them decide to jump on after?
Well, I obviously, we're working towards this project. I think a lot of a, a lot of uh the other agencies. Are looking for us to get to the point where we have a a more certainty. That the boards, you know, the the we're starting to construct, we're starting to do these things that they can see, right? Because everybody's gun shy and it's it's seeing what happens. So I think that's what they're waiting for. We do have letters of intent with C S D and D W P already. Uh to the tune of, I think it's like four hundred and sixty thousand dollars already uh towards the project. Um and again, it's just a letter of intent, the financial agreements haven't been put in place. M W D, we've had discussions with M W D, the they are aware of our ask. I understand their reluctance because they do put a lot of money into uh the blue water project that keeps water into the lake. So I totally understand their reluctance, but obviously, they're they're a big beneficiary to the project. Uh the ski resorts themselves, they are going to, you know, at one point in time, uh I've sat down with the G M from. From the ski resorts, we did have a discussion at that time. He was um, he was in support of. Contributing towards the project at that point. At time, we don't have an agreement yet. I've sent. Uh letters of intent both to the M W D and the ski resorts. I haven't received them back yet, but I understand we're, you know, a little further away, uh you know, probably three years out before we'll be producing water. So I um I think the ski resorts, they benefit, um you know. They don't, they don't, like far as, like say, the golf course, they don't really benefit from the golf course. Having that water, using additional water from the lake to, and this water to. Um to irrigate the the golf course because they could get it out of the wells. We benefit from not having them pump it out of the ground, so D W P has more water in the ground to pump out, that makes sense. So that doesn't benefit, but. When, when if they need water for, say, their um their bike park. Um they're also planning an an expansion to the ski resorts, they'll need additional water for that. A hundred and eighty eighty eighty, excuse me, a hundred and fifty acre feet uh here at whole at this point. Um they're gonna need additional water. I don't know, it's gonna be up to M W D, whether they want to um. To allow them to get additional water for that purpose. But obviously, this this water probably would play a role in that whole concept.
And and have you thought of different ways that visitors, you know, you mentioned collecting something from visitors?
Yeah.
Have you thought of any ways that that we could do that?
You know, there has been some conversation in the past when um I've made presentations for the city. Uh that were one of the, the city was one of the ones we we um we uh approached. Um there has been some talk of different opportunities to uh to uh to uh contribute towards the project. The identified source is really up to the city and the city manager to figure out exactly how they wanna contribute towards the project. Obviously, there's a benefit to them. Um and so that is one, there was uh. You know, their capping that visitor base is 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 difficult, right? Now, unless you identify, say, like we've talked about a T O T, um that did get brought brought up. Um and unless you identify this project specifically in the actual T O T documents. When the, when the um public adopts the T O T, you can't say, oh, this is going towards the replenished figure project. You have to say it's for general use, and then if the if the city allocates money through its general fund, it can do that. Um the uh we identified some other opportunities through lake permits and slip um increases. The the marinas have been approached in the past for contribution towards the project. Because obviously, a higher lake level means they don't have to chase water way out of middle lake and means that there's additional um support. For their uh slips, so they don't have to chase away out there and you'll get more people wanting to put their boat in when there's higher lake levels. Those kind of things. Those are the only kind of things that, you know, we didn't, you know, talk about um. A couple of other opportunities, but it's really difficult to tap that base, you know, without going out with some sort of measure or something like that.
Okay, thank you.
You mentioned forty percent, is there sixty percent local?
That's correct.
Was that driven on the plant here or what was those numbers applied?
Yeah, so that's the flow rate coming in the plant. So forty percent is uh forty percent of the flow is attributed towards um visitor base.
Any more questions? So we're gonna talk about Barwa and R B D combined for fiscal year twenty twenty five through twenty twenty nine. We'll start with the operating budget. So this is now part of the operating budget, operating maintenance, expenses, debt service, and an increase in reserves. And we're gonna go into further detail in the next slides. Based on the established rate increases, operating revenues increased by eighteen percent for fiscal year twenty twenty five through fiscal year twenty twenty eight. And rate increases are forecast to be more than a percent in this year twenty twenty nine. When analyzing rates, the agency takes into account operating costs, reserve requirements, and future capital needs requirements. This year twenty twenty five through twenty twenty seven rates were set for the reserve requirements. So that reserves were in place to meet debt service requirements, including bond covenant requirements. And meeting operational needs, including increasing facility and operational reserves. Operating expenses, not including depreciation, increased by fourteen percent on average. The average increase for fiscal year twenty twenty five through twenty twenty seven is five percent. This year twenty twenty eight increases by fifty one percent over the prior period. As a result of the R B D project coming online in October twenty twenty seven. This year twenty twenty nine increases by ten percent over the prior period. As this is forecast to be the first full fiscal year that R B B will be in operation. Debt service increases from seven hundred and forty thousand to four point four million with the addition of debt service for R B B. So this shows where these increases are going to go. So debt service increases to four point four million. I know your slide said four point seven million. I'm sorry, that was a typo, but it is four point four million. With the addition of new processing equipment for the R B B project. The emergency contingency fund increases from five hundred thousand to one million. The first year of R B B operating expenses is forecast to be two point nine million. The bond covenant requires the agency's net revenues are at least one point two times the total annual debt service. Net revenues include operating revenues, plus connection fees and interest income, minus operating expenses before depreciation. This year twenty twenty five through twenty twenty seven, we're set to build required reserves and the first year of operation for R B B. So over the five-year period, revenues are projected to increase by fifteen percent on average and expenses by fourteen percent on average. So these are the line items to have the greatest variances over the five-year period and account for seventy five percent of operating expenses. Salaries and benefits, increase seven percent on average, that's with the addition of the administrative position. And increase of benefits based on the fiscal year twenty twenty four actuarial evaluations. Chemicals, eight percent on average. Carbon power, it's equal every third year, so that expense uh fluctuates over the years. Permits and fees, eight percent on average, this fluctuates year to year. As the E L A P accreditation services are done every other year. Insurance expense, seven percent on average, and this is based on actuals from fiscal year twenty twenty four, plus inflationary adjustments. And then R B B expenses over the five-year period increases thirty two percent. That's because R B B goes online for fiscal year twenty twenty eight. Capital expenditures over the five-year period, these are some highlights. R B B project at seventy seven million. Offstation did fall at seven hundred and sixty two thousand, which we spoke about may change. The asphalt replacement repair at one point one million, that may also change. And then the clarifier one rehab at one point two million. Five-year CIPs totals eighty one point six million with an annual average of sixteen point three billion. With the largest asset investments in replenishment, seventy seven billion, and the treatment plan at two point two million. Debt service coverage is five point four more times in fiscal year twenty twenty five. As a result of building required reserves and the first year operations for the R B B project. Coverage decreases to one point four two times by the end of fiscal year twenty twenty nine with full debt service for R B B. But it's still over the nine point two million minimum coverage.
One point two times.
I'm sorry, one point two times minimum coverage, thank you. Debt service payments increased to four point four million with the addition of the R B B debt service. The financial summary for fiscal year twenty twenty five through twenty twenty seven. Capital designated fund balance increased to twenty three point five million. That includes capital placement reserve for current uh capital of one point five million. That's actually for fiscal year twenty twenty three capital and future capital at nine point five million. So the agency is financially strong. Reserve funds are adequate and minimum balance part of its armament. Capital expenditures full eighty one point six million, with new debt for the R B B project in counseling for remaining non-go projects. That is free for the period. In fiscal year twenty twenty five, R B B would be alone interested only payments being reconstructed. This year twenty twenty six, R B B revenue logging begins. This year twenty twenty seven, the two thousand and eleven installment purchase agreement is fully amortized, so that payment goes away. This year twenty twenty eight, R B B would be alone principal and interest payments begin. And again, debt service coverage starts at five point four four times, decreases to one point four eight times by this year twenty twenty nine. Giving the agency a four million dollar debt capacity in this at the end of this year twenty twenty nine. That concludes my presentation. Would you have any questions?
Page forty four, operating budget, I mentioned two point nine million operating expenses.
For R B B.
Right, that's an expectation for yearly operation.
That's the, that's the expectation you said in what year?
Page forty four, it's uh this is the first year, operating expenses.
That's correct. That the operating expenses, man, at this point, that's the estimate. Uh based on um all available information from the uh engineers that have estimated the cost to. Implement the project.
And then over time, I don't remember what the number was. How long do you expect the reverse osmosis? Apparatus? To last before it has to be replaced?
Well, then the actual uh reverse osmosis apparatus is, it it have probably has like between a thirty and forty year lifespan. Uh on the actual apparatus. If you're talking about the filters themselves, the filters, I think they said ten years on the.
Five.
Five to ten years, depending on.
What we do to it.
What we do to it, how much, you know, how much, how how much abuse it takes.
So in five to ten years.
But those are.
Additional or you?
No, that's in that operating, that's already in that operating budget.
So that the end of the five or ten years, consider you make enough money to.
Yeah, I mean, these are, I don't, you know, filters run five thousand dollars a piece or something like that. I mean, I mean, we're gonna have quite few of them. But, you know, we'll replace them as they um as they uh go bad. Um there is, is a cleaning that happens to them, uh an acid wash. And so, you know, you're technically, you're supposed to keep, you know, the be able to keep it clean. But over time, they'll end up having to replace them at some point in time.
Just want to thank Bethany Christie for a great presentation. It was pretty thorough. Thank you very much.
Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on that presentation? Can you touch the face and make it clear on the microphone? Here you go, thank you.
Thank you for uh me speaking. And I'm not totally against this project, when I'm against is the fact that we can't go in debt anymore. Uh money keeps getting spent like we have money. People think there, there's a lot of seniors here and we cannot afford. Ta- the taxes, I mean, my tax on my house is like seventy five, seventy thousand five hundred dollars a year. That I have to figure out how it will look in five years. And then then our utilities are going up and then our gas is going up and then, you know, everything keeps going down. Your salaries are going up, but not even that. Okay, you guys voted yourself extra benefits, your insurance is going up, the cost of insurance is another thing that you have to take into account. Because the cost of insurance continues to skyrocket. Continues, and that's gonna be another thing that's gonna cost the taxpayers more money down the line. And so these are extra expenses that are we taking in account? Why do you have to always spend all the money that you collect? Oh, well, we have extra money, we better go spend it. No, put it in a reserve. We need to start living under our budget that we can afford. And we can't afford this project. I like the idea of actually piping this water to the ski slopes, let them use it and pay for it. Because that's in the long run, that's what it's moving for. So that might make a lot of the residents happy that you're not moving the lake. That you're making snow some and putting some tents with this water. How about maybe even in in Baldwin Lake? We used to have a wonderful lake out there, but the water that comes down from Hogan Valley was captured at a river mile and over. And we were putting in that that uh uh place that was just taking all the water from the creek. These have raging rivers there, they used to go along the lake. And when we get face warm, we still get that huge river that comes down on a a Van Dusen Creek. Then they call it Kerry Creek. I mean, Baldwin Lake's supposed to be a lake. So you could just leave the water there. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak on this item?
I did have. A question, I guess. When you mentioned ten percent increase in salaries. That's not ten percent increase to any. Body so much as you're adding more personnel. So yes, there are some cola and some increases, but nobody's getting a ten percent increase.
No, nobody's getting a ten percent increase. That that ten percent increase in includes salaries and benefits. And our benefits, basically, you know, Calpers, we have to go work hard in Calpers. And whatever rate of return for retirement they get on on the money they have in there. That that's, that's gonna either increase or decrease, which has been increasing our benefit expenses. But no, not one person is getting a ten percent increase. The increase is basically gonna be the four point seven percent cola. And then if they are eligible for merit adjustments, they could get up to three point three percent.
I'm operating on some assumptions. My first assumption is that you collect money via property taxes from each home. Am I correct about that?
No.
Okay, so. Whether it's homes or commercial businesses, whatever, people that are hooked up to the sewer system, am I correct?
You said no, could you clarify?
Yeah, so so what happens is Barra actually has three customers. The three customers are C S D, um the city, Big Bear Lake, and the county of San Bernardino. Barra itself does not collect any taxes from any tax hole. We send the the um the rate structure over to the city, over to C S D, and over to uh the county. And they administer the the uh rate structure onto the residents. So they'll include it into the the tax hole. But Barra itself does not uh have any other.
So 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 you have a third party, basically.
We're a third party.
Divesting taxes to the residents and the property owners in the valley.
In 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 essence.
Take you. My.
In in essence, that's the way it happens. We're we are formed as a J P A, Joint Powers Association.
Authority.
Authority. She she helps me. So we're made up of two from the city, two from C S D, and one from the county. They um they make the decisions on the rate structures and and then pass it on to their uh pass it on to the member agencies, which they represent. And then the member agencies then do a proctu eighteen vote uh of the people and send and send letters out to the residents. And the residents have an opportunity to weigh in on whether the rate structure is uh is sufficient. Or uh needs to be, you know, they'll have any complaints concerned with it, they do that with their uh with their in individual member agencies. But you're, in in essence, you're right, we're a third, we're basically a third party supporting the other agency.
Providing service to all of the group property in the Big Bear Valley.
That's correct.
And it is being metted out, you know, uh it is being, you know, to those property owners, basically.
Right.
To cover.
Right, and if you're not part of, like, so if you're not part of C S D. You don't, if you have, say, a septic system or or a holding tank, then you're not part of. That whole situation.
I understand what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah.
Um so it's my understanding, or my belief, and I could be wrong about the the. There's approximately thirty thousand homes in in the Big Bear Valley, am I correct about that?
Par- parcels of land.
Parcels of land, okay, so and many of those are not valid.
That's true.
Um how many, how many hookups are there currently? Because I'm looking, I I if if I'm estimating that there are thirty thousand hookups to this. And there's a six million dollar cost for this reverse osmosis. My calculator tells me that's about two hundred dollars per hookup. That this is gonna cost.
So, okay. Okay, so uh we have, uh Barra has roughly about twenty five thousand EDUs, which is what you consider a hookup. Okay, um and so I haven't done the the direct math, but Barra, but um overall, I think Barra's rate is. Two hundred and forty dollars, forty three dollars per EDU currently, or applies. And then with this project, it will uh approximately double. That that rate will.
Okay, so if I'm currently paying two hundred and twenty five dollars.
You'll be paying.
To be hooked up.
Four hundred and fifty dollars.
You're looking at four hundred and fifty?
That's correct.
Okay, so.
Um in time, I mean, obviously, we have a rate increase over time, but yes, ultimate pace.
That's pretty significant. I mean, you know, to have my super, it's like that charge is double. Is is a significant consideration. And then when you take a look at all of the ways that utilities have changed. I mean, all of a sudden, I'm looking at a gas bill that's doubled or tripled, an electric bill that's doubled or tripled. You know, I mean, there's been very serious concerns here. Yeah, there are other communities that have already implemented this system. And have a trap record. So then have had.
Welcome to it. Okay, and those are. Actually, are those in the process?
I could.
Both.
No.
Right.
I don't, also, these are, most of these have been implemented projects.
These have been, they have been activated. So they're currently doing reverse osmosis and. And and putting the water where it's supposed to go.
So there is a, on this list, there's a mix of either projects that are implementing or have tested, are already in implementing this project. Uh totally, but there is a mix in there. But yes, there is a a mix on that list of those projects.
Okay, so the ones that have fully implemented, they have, they have sort of proven success?
Oh, you bet.
I think, okay. Well, it would seem to me that there should be some way of being able to. And and it concerns me that the ski resorts that rely on the water from the lake. And I'm sorry, but I don't believe that it all goes back. Maybe that should be, but that that some of these organizations that significantly benefit. From a project like this are not. Right at the front of the line, ready to commit. That that concerns me. And it also concerns me to know that I'm facing massive increases in my bill. Or something where, you know, I, the state of California ironically doesn't allow evidently. The the snowplow, snow in the winter to be put in the lake. I I. Yeah, I mean, I, i- i- it's like, so, exactly. This this really concerns me and and.
The the water, just so that we are aware, the snowplow material has a lot of debris. A lot of sus- a lot of suspended debris in in this snowplow material and a lot of salt. And so if you dump that in the lake, obviously, a lake like ours, especially how, you know, clean it is, how the water quality is.
I didn't realize the salt, the snow.
There there is salt that happens, yes.
Oh, okay.
And so you can't, you can't pick that all up and dump it in the lake. It's it's it, the water quality is, you know, just, I mean, when acid melts, it's poor.
But but isn't some of the, if the snow melts and it finds its way into the lake. Then the debris remains on the dirt, is that the 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 thought or?
I mean.
We still end up with the salt in the lake.
Yeah, I mean, I again, you know, not to get, you know, so technical about all of this. But obviously, some of it, some of that water makes it to the lake, actually, quite a bit of that water makes it to the lake. Most of that is runoff going to those to those creeks. Uh when when the water comes off the 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 mountain tops. And like, obviously, there's not as much debris, there is still some sediment that comes down with them. But again, it's, you know, uh the the salt is really happens on the road base. That, some of that does make it in the lake, and I'm sure if you tested the water that's coming off of the roads. That some of that does make it in the lake, and I'm sure if you tested the water that's coming off of the roads, you would see a higher salt salt content. Uh, that is uh, an issue that N W D has to deal with. It's not something that we at Barra would deal with, but it is something that the N M D would have to deal with.
Well, anyway, I mean, um. My understanding of reverse osmosis, because I had a device in my own house, is that it. It seems to waste a lot of water is one of the things that I was told. One of the reasons why I replaced it with a filtration system.
Yeah, so, I mean, again. You're okay, man, man, okay, so, um, with our reverse osmosis, the the proposed system right now has a recovery. We're we're getting that recovery between eighty five to ninety percent recovery rate on the water that's coming from. So our plant feeds into this, would feed into this system. We'd have an eighty five to ninety percent recovery rate on the reverse osmosis. It would then go into a secondary reverse osmosis uh, system that would remove the brine. That also has an eighty five to ninety percent recovery rate, hence why we get a a, you know, one and two percent of of waste from the entire process. So that's. That's, if you combine the two, eighty five to ninety percent, you end up with a a one or two percent waste um, out of that process.
Okay, so. I I now in my head, uh, if you get eighty five percent of the water and then.
You end up with fifteen, fifteen percent.
Okay.
And then take that fifteen percent and I collect another eighty five percent.
Out of that fifteen percent, that was right.
Right, so I, so I take that fifteen percent, I put it through another process, and I collect another, you know, eighty five to ninety percent. And then that means the overall, so if you take the total number. And you end up with this amount, I end up with.
I I think you're taking the water that, the eighty five percent of the water and running it.
Now, that water is clean, looks like that, and moves forward.
Well, I will, I will say, I I am concerned about, especially given what we are experiencing right now economically. Um, that looking at a doubling of. A a super hookup charge. Is very crushing.
So so no, I I mean, totally understand that, you know, again, this whole process is is about. Lake, you know, raising the lake level, keeping the water on our mountain. If that's important to the the public overall, that's important to the the public overall. To keep the water on our mountain, our water on our mountain, in our watershed.
One last thought, and it's my understanding that all the water in the lake is technically owed by the Redlands Water Company. Am I correct about that?
Uh, again, that's an N W P. Deal, but it depends on, you know, depends on a lot of different things. They they spend about two million dollars a year to to. To buy about sixty five hundred acre feet a year of water in lieu of letting it out of the lake.
Right, no, I understand.
So, over time, what would happen is some of the water would be then owned by that.
My my point is that it would seem that that could be another. Source. For helping to fund this project. Because if you're putting the water in the lake and it technically becomes their water.
Dooley, Dooley, no, we we've actually talked about that and and had that discussion. Thank you.
David, I just wanted to ask one, one other thing. Talking about all this is that, you know, in all the years I've worked with government agencies. You know, I've learned that Sacramento's only doing one thing, and that's making rules and regulations. And passing them on to local jurisdictions to figure out how to employ. Um, states not our friend or ever have been for local jurisdictions. Um, and, you know, recently, the Water was Water Resource Conservation Board lifted all the regulations on. This type of, building these type of facilities. I I I just, you know, this is hap- this is going to happen. Whether we like it in Big Bear Lake or not. Eventually, in the state of California, we're sending two million gallons a day out of our watershed, which is all the way, probably. No one in the state's even doing that. We're the last, we're the last jurisdiction.
Right, you couldn't do it anymore?
Yeah, you can't do it anymore. And I just, you know, want to caution everybody is that, yeah, it's, you know. It's almost like, yeah, we're in a catch twenty two situation. Yeah, it is absolutely expensive, but I don't disagree. Is anybody in the room, I'm in the same position. A lot of people have fixed income. Um, you know, I'm just, you know, I'm afraid of the five years from now. If you don't move forward, or the five or ten years from now, we're gonna be doing it anyway. It's gonna cost us twice your three times as much. Plus, we're gonna be competing with everybody else in the state of California for all this money. Because the state's gonna force us to do this. I just, I see it coming. I just, uh, based on what I've seen happen over my career. Eventually, Sacramento will make a decision for us. And we can pay, we can pay for it. It's as simple as that.
The writing is on the wall.
I represent C S D in this. And so my water superintendent of C S D. Is now trained to watch, he then hears his industry names, and he passes them on to me. And I'll go through looking for projects like this. But typically, what I look for is, are they doing same or similar to what we're doing? And then not how much the project costs, but how much per acre foot. Because ultimately, that's. The only way to compare apples and oranges is. By cost per acre foot. As Mr. Will pointed out. We were lucky to be first out of game to get some of these rentals, because no one else was looking for it yet. Now, everybody's jumping on the bandwagon, and it's gonna be harder to get. Rents. And loans, because everybody's looking for it. It's also a reality, as we've been told. You could expect within the next ten years. All jurisdictions that aren't already doing tertiary water treatment. Will be required to do that. And if I remember right, you said thirty million is what it could cost us to do that.
If if you, uh, that today is just the tertiary, yeah, the tertiary today would be about thirty million. Ten years from now, that number could be much different.
And I'm not trying to justify the expense, because tomorrow it will cost more, simply that. We might be able to sidestep. The replenishment aspect and the purification. But ultimately, we will probably be required to start cleaning out literally our act. And that then we will still need somewhere to put this water. And whether it's out in Baldwin to evaporate, or in the lake to evaporate, or down the back to evaporate, throwing out alpha. Consider. That we've been pulled the plug on the bottom of the valley. Almost fifty years ago, and have been pumping for that time down to the desert. And so that's where some of the interest comes from in saying, stop sending her water elsewhere, keep it here. But by the same token, if we treat this water and want to keep it here, we have to be very careful about. Selling it to Verella Mutual or whoever to put on the orchards or for the housing tracks down below. It does no good if we. Purify it and then ship it out of valley. We just defeated part of the excuse for doing.
You you mentioned the cost per acre foot, just to mention, when we compare other agencies. Down the hill that are doing this type of work. Their rate structure that we are proposing and the rate structure that they are currently charging are very similar. I mean, within dollars of each other. So. The this cost, uh, albeit, you know, it sounds high, what we are proposing. Um, is very much in line with a, uh, with other agencies that are doing the same process that we are proposing.
And you can. Go online and Google for these kind of projects to see who else is doing it. And read up on it. It may be more confusing, but at least there's the information. Go research it, see what they're doing. And get verification that what we are doing is. Proven technology. It's not pie in the sky. The only kind of odd thing is when we ship filthy water to Israel to have them verify that that part of the process would work for us here. Kind of strange, but it's the only company doing it, so that's why we had to. See if we can make it work.
Yes.
Unfortunately. One more public, sorry, going on to the general manager report.
General manager report, I will switch to that. Um. I think overall, um. Thanks. Oh, okay. I I don't have any, unless anybody else has any questions with regard to the general manager report, I have nothing to highlight specifically on the general manager report. So if anybody has any actual questions.
I have a question, maybe, maybe.
Sure.
I'll take it up with the other.
Off to our passion. Okay.
Do we still have the records of the video? High pressure line?
Uh, for the sixteen inch port tank? Yes.
No, high pressure.
I'm sorry.
Yes. Yes, low pressure, yeah, low, seventy P S I, seventy eight P S I is the is the number. No, that's at the plant. Yep, we have the records for it.
And at the moment, I didn't see anything in our budget. Even under that one group. For replacement of that line, we're putting bandages, yes.
No, the the, so when I was talking about the capital project, that to replace the the wall structure. And replacing with a liner into this, that is the the line that I'm stopping on.
All right, and I'm going back to the force made from bigger to here.
Yes.
Uh, somebody unverified just had, it seems to me it was a beach city. And they were talking about. Similar situation.
Right.
And that they're gonna have to replace it, because after all, it was installed in nineteen eighty. And that, okay, that's new with the mothers.
There were in nineteen seventy four, nineteen seventy four, this line was installed. Uh, and so, um, we're not proposing to replace it, just because of the way it, where it lies. We're we're proposing to line the inside with a with a liner. And so they put a liner inside, they blow it up with a, they blow it up with hot air, and it forms around the inside of the pipe.
So you look at periodically. Addressing maintenance rather than replacement of the entire system.
Yeah, at this point, the the cost to replace that entire line. You know, is is astronomical. That's a big word, but it is astronomical, as big as the budget would be.
But it's not working, we're also in a world where.
Right, and we're not gonna, and we're not gonna allow it to not work, but that's why we're proposing to line the inside of the line.
Okay.
No, uh, yeah, I found my question, Dave. Uh. The the I R's, uh, February twentieth is the last sixty day of the, uh, can can we? Can we get an update from Tom and from R G E as possible?
Oh, yes, most definitely. The, I mean, we'll probably bring the I R for for ratification in April. That's the the timeframe. So far, we we see fourteen letters of. Comment letters from different agencies. Uh, agencies and and individual uh, people. Um, and uh, most of it seems to be on track with, you know, the concerns seem to be on track with. What's in the, uh, what's already been looked at in the I R. There might be some updates or some additional information to provide to them.
Yeah, that would be my interest. I didn't, I don't need to go through the whole I R. My interest is how they respond to the the comments.
Yeah, and then we have a, we have a meeting tomorrow.
I think so. Um, during the April meeting, that's what they're gonna be addressing, is the comments for you before the ratification of the.
Okay, great, that's that's one more true. Yeah.
I also noticed that we made comment about. Big boots, any use because of the new hotel, sixty four. Exactly, um, I believe there's another coming out. Can you compare Walgreens to the general, is before?
Fifty two, I did up in the six.
It's about, it's about fifty six keys.
Yeah.
So obviously, I play the unions, but.
People have some in August called the boutique one, yeah?
Yes.
So you got, are you? Throwing that into the next version?
We we don't put it into the budget, because we run a budget of forty five, because again, we don't wanna take into consideration. More money than we generate, right? Um, as you see from the budget, we hit the budget within a thousand dollars. Of, or we didn't overspend, we didn't understand, we hit our budget for about a thousand dollars right on the notes. Uh, that's, that's pretty good, um, overall, uh, with a. Five and a half million dollar budget, was about that? About a five and a half million dollar budget to hit it within a thousand dollars, that's a, that's pretty good work.
That's typical. Any questions along those lines? Last questions, last chairman. I already consented, tell one event. I'll move to approve. Second, seventy three seventy.
Vice Chair Miller.
Hi.
Director Russo.
Hi.
Director Segovia.
Hi.
And Chair Walsh.
Bye.
Under new business, twenty eight resolution. One twenty twenty four, a resolution regarding board to repair area regional wastewater agency making emergency findings and authorizing and ratifying the urgency contracts. For the oxidation ditch number one shaft number one repair, reallocate one hundred thirty four thousand four hundred eighty seven from the cattle budget quarter pairs.
Yes, so, um. And I don't remember the, oh, yeah, December nineteenth. So it was, I think, the day of our last board meeting. Uh, that we had, um, the shaft on ditch number. One, uh, the shaft one on ditch one, uh, snapped. Um, into, it's a thirty foot long shaft. Um, and, uh, I don't know if you recall, but the shaft itself has these paddles on it. Basically slapped air into the water. Um, and over time, it was fifty years old at least. Um, and over time, they tend to break. This is one of those run, you fail pieces of equipment. It fell. Um, and it snapped right in the center, um, and so we, uh, needed to immediately order another shaft. Needed to get that ordered, so we ordered the shaft, and then we had a, um, prior prior contract to help us with a different ditch, with a different shaft. With quarters, and, um, he agreed to come back out and help us with the shaft, and. So, uh, so we could get this thing replaced as quickly as possible. This. Uh, these ditches help us with the treatment process to ensure that we can remove, uh, nitrogen from our, um, our treatment process. So that's what that this slapping of the water does, is we train the air to that into the ditch itself. And so we need to get that, uh, it back in place so we can stay compliant with our, uh, regulatory agencies. So that's why we moved very quickly to get this underway for that shaft. We got the shaft. Uh, I believe it was installed yesterday.
Yeah, it should be completed this morning. You're a user, she's getting that today, but I'm in here, so I can't hurt, but it's right here, it's in the future, so it's like, kind of this, I'll go find out.
But yeah, so the the shaft was installed, they're finishing up the final touches on that today, and it should be back in in, uh, in operations.
We don't stock replacement parts because that's a lot of money to asset in the shop.
I mean, the shaft itself, I think, was forty five grand?
Yeah, I think it was about, you know, I have, I have the one that I took out full and reformed, and I'm gonna, my contractor's gonna come. Next week, I think, with bum, we've been brought flatbed, it's gonna be China sheet shops, it's gonna be crewed up and and actually have a spare.
Yeah, that that's.
Guaranteed that that's gonna hold together, but we're gonna try at least have something to speed up the process if necessary.
And that, that's why we, a lot of these, you know, big ticket items, forty five, fifty thousand dollar items, we don't keep on the shelf, because obviously, we don't have the budget for that. We try to stay, you know, true to our budget. Um. The other thing is that eventually, if everything goes as planned with the replenish. The, um, though these shafts and this type of equipment will actually be replaced with a fine mobile diffuser. Which will be basically an air system that is underneath the water and blowing air up, uh, as opposed to slapping air down. Uh, so it'll be much more efficient and, uh, much more, um. Fail safe than the, uh, system that we're currently using that's been. Working pretty consistently for the last fifty plus years.
I have motion to approve. Unless, I shouldn't say. Probably not.
No, come on, it's a shaft, Steve.
You get the shaft?
Yes, he's getting the shaft.
I'm here.
He's getting the shaft. Bro, I know who's getting the shaft, that's it.
I make my master to approve. You get that?
I did not.
Russo. Next second. Miller, it's second.
Thank you. Vice Chair Miller.
Hi.
Director Russo.
Hi.
Director Segovia.
Hi.
And Chair Walsh.
I'm.
During board reorganization.
Yes.
This is, uh, by the end of February each year, we're supposed to, uh, reassign officers.
That's correct.
And it was before the end, what, December?
You were. You were at to take the place of, uh, Mr. Green's. Uh, Mr. Green's chair position.
You were, you were at to take the place of, uh, Mr. Green's, uh, Mr. Green's chair position. So it's time to bring this up this time.
It is time to shovel the chair and vice chair positions.
So, uh, Dave, can you, just because we have some board members, um, just kind of explain about the policies that they have allowed?
So we keep track, we, we keep track of it over time, but normally what happens is, uh, it's either it becomes the city, the county, or, or, um, C S B and it, and the, and the chair, the vice chair positions rotate over time. We've been keeping track on it, so that way we keep it right, far as right, I mean, obviously the board have, it's at their discretion, they can all, you know, nominate anybody and switch the chair and the, and the positioning around. Um, but this seems to be the fairest process as, uh, as, uh, has had been in the past. Um, if you are a new board member, uh, you have to have a, uh, a year onto our board before you can become the chair. Uh, and for that, and for that reason, you can't become the vice chair because you could become the default chair should the, uh, should the vice, uh, should the chair be not absent. So it, right now, as it stands, um, Mr. Walsh is currently the board chair, and the vice chair is, uh, Miller. Um, in normal process, Mr., Mr. Miller would be, become the vice chair, I mean, become the chair, and then, uh, because of the nudity of our newest board member, thank you for joining us, um, for, uh, Segovia, um, we, it would be, um, Mr. Eric for the vice chair. If the process were to stay the same.
And the other aspect of that is Mr. Russo also has not been on board for a year.
He has not been on the board, he will get three bodies, you, yeah, and you can't, and then, uh, yes, and it was also the fact that it's not his turn. So I need a nomination of one of those three bodies to be chair.
Yep.
No, it would be Mr. Miller, uh, I mean, the, yeah, the protocol is that I would be the chair. Yeah, you would be the chair.
Next, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not a person, it's by agents, and the next agency that is the city big, but if I understand, right, the city big railway. Segovia, I don't, that if I'm absent and you have to step in to be chair, you can't, don't have a year, you can't. So Rick is basically by default the vice chair, by the five protocol, so it would be nominated as a guest.
Yes. But show, it would be a nomination of Miller to, is that, uh, my hearing nomination of Miller to chair?
You did that, yes.
Okay.
That's what I heard.
All right, we're gonna do a vote.
I'll second.
Thank you. Vice Chair Miller.
Aye.
Director Russo.
Aye.
Director Segovia.
Aye.
And Chair Walsh.
Aye.
And then, and then you still need a nomination for vice chair.
I'll nominate over here.
I'll second that.
Vice Chair Miller.
Aye.
Director Russo.
Aye.
Director Segovia.
Aye.
And Chair Walsh.
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna put the phone down, wait a minute.
Yeah, you just, we switched to the next one.
Solar panel installation. So I was approached by now two companies that are interested in any excess property that we have down in the Cern to install solar panels. Um, at our facility down there, we have four hundred and thirty three acres. Um, that could be considered by the board. Um, about a hundred and ninety is currently being used by our grower, um, so obviously, you know, that, that area would not be available for solar panels. This is more is the board interested in having me go and have a conversation with them and see if there is a deal to be had for them to rent our, or lease our property, uh, to put solar panels on. And it's really just up to the board whether they want me to do that or they don't want any part of that.
And you said you've now been approached by a second?
By two now.
Do you have any idea what the financial gain is?
I don't, um, have any idea what the revenue stream would be, obviously, you know, typically it's a lease, you know, a, a lease option, so I, I don't know what exactly the lease rate is down there. I can bring that all back and see if the board wants to consider it, but I didn't wanna spend a lot of time with negotiating a, you know, terms and conditions of a, of a, something that the board was not interested in, in doing at all.
So are you saying going down there instead of putting them out here?
No, that's a different conversation. Um, you know, I, I understand that Steve would prefer that.
Yeah, I have a comment.
Yeah, he has, yeah, when you, um, so there are, there is, um, this is a separate, you know, concept, a separate project, obviously. Um, we are going to maximize the amount of solar on our existing facility as much as possible. But to support the energy requirement of the replenished Big Bear project would require additional space. If that, um, was something the board wanna consider, um, obviously, there's a huge savings to the project and a huge savings to our agency if we do so up here.
Can I be clarification? It looks like the green outline is a quarter section.
Yes.
And. We only have the entirety, but the orange section, sign of right up the middle, is what he was throwing out that one?
That's the lease agreement that he has currently, is that section.
But for at least a year, he hasn't.
He, he, this is, this is four hundred and thirty three acres, the, the, the lease is four hundred and thirty three acres, we own six hundred acres, I think, is the number down there. Four hundred and thirty three is what his lease agreement says, but he's only been using a hundred and ninety of that.
So we're on the other side of two forty seven?
We are on the other side of two forty.
I think we all, well.
Um, and we, uh, we owned, uh, two forty seven up, strangely enough, up until a couple of years ago, uh, when we, uh.
We missed the chance to hold the state?
No, we did, we, we gave it to the state because we didn't want the liability.
Okay.
And married in section zero one and zero two, the north half of that map, it's pretty much where the bill guard. The south end of that map on the southwest side is our river basins, so actually, we did start some water river basin, rest of it be pretty much rose right along the fence line on two forty seven, so the rest of it is all.
And if we choose to authorize investigation, it's noncommittal. And it could all be questioned because God knows some protected desert tortoise or something.
It, it could definitely, obviously, we, we would wanna be, be responsible for the environmental review of that property, uh, we would put that back on the company, the, the company that wants to take the lease and they would have to go through the county and go through that whole process of, of pursuing, you know, permits to do this. Um, I'm not sure, you know, I, I don't know exactly what the process they would have to go through, but we, we don't know that. Uh, and so they would have to investigate that a lot of these and whether it's.
They've been successful on the west side of, uh, Kepok Road because.
They have.
They shouldn't, yeah, I don't know.
They have been successful with it, so I, I mean, you know, I'm not sure, and again, you know, the other thing that I, I would wanna consider is there's some environmental, um, groups interested in, in, um, us, us being the agency, uh, returning this space back to its original condition with additional native plants and those kind of things, uh, based on the replenished project. And so we would wanna make sure that we account for the, those issues that are out there as well, are those, uh, so.
And while you say there is no money, and one that, there's your time, Bridget's time, attorney's time, there's gotta be some cost to at least look into this.
Yeah, I mean, aside from time and, and, uh, we do have, you know, lease agreement, um, say, templates that we could, you know, bring forward and start to get that conversation going, I think we did one for uh, the, the, um, cell towers and those kind of things, so we, we have a baseline for it. Um, but we could certainly start with something like that. And but there will be time, my time and Bridget's time in, in this investigation or however we want to go. So it's up to you, what do you wanna consider board questions, leases or not public questions?
Oh.
Yeah, surprise, no.
So, uh, as your neighbor, I think if an opportunity exists to build a solar panel, build solar panels down there and maybe not lease the land, but own solar panels, sell the power to the S C E to offset the power cost to Big Bear, I think that would be a wonderful opportunity to not go solar panels right there, that's all.
Okay, but that's not the proposal, right?
That is not the proposal, uh, we've already helped these who would like to lease this for their solar production and their. Right, and, and, and if there was, the, 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 the cost differential to, like, I, I can't see the savings to the project for putting solar panels, utilizing power from solar panels is about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
Is there the potential to do our project and sell the power to Edison?
There is a, i- is there a potential? Sure, there's always a potential, but would, I, I don't think we would generate six hundred and fifty thousand dollars alarm rate for, you know, green energy is, you know, probably still in that seven to nine cents range per kilowatt, I don't think we could generate enough revenue to offset the cost for this project.
So I'm gonna come back, um, we had a discussion, you said you needed about two acres to build the solar panels, you needed to build to offset the energy costs. We're talking about.
Two additional acres.
Two additional acres. So if we're talking about two acres, if we had two acres down there, and I'm sure that it's gonna be much larger than that because nobody builds a two acre solar park, which are bad. Um, that might be, it might be something worth looking into, I know it's not what we're, what's on the agenda, but I know it's something that's definitely worth looking into because we could actually build a much larger solar plant, or we don't couldn't own it and then sell the power to S C E, offsetting even more costs of the R B E project.
Yeah, and just so, just so you know, I, I love the, the, the concept that we, I'd already, no offense, but I'd already thought of that whole concept. Um, the, we're not in the sale of power business.
Understood.
We're not in our formation documents.
This is an offsetting cost, to offset costs.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I don't know that we, we would be allowed to do it.
Understood, yeah, so I'm looking into it.
We also offered it up to Bear Valley Electric as well.
Good.
As a way of saying, well, you go build that down there and then give us power up here to offset the program, so we, we, we did approach them about that as well.
What did they say?
Um, I mean, so far, many frickets, but yes.
I know they have to build that's on a green, they have to buy that's on a green energy anyway, it might be a way for them to.
Yeah, so we, since, hence why I offered it to, I talked to Paul.
Okay.
And Arcony and said, hey, would you be interested in some property down there to put some solar? You can pipe it into Edison and then give us power up here.
Good.
So I will approach them again about it, just for your own, and, you know, maybe the board might wanna, you know, but I can approach them again and see if there, you know, if there's any other interest in that, but.
Like I said earlier, appreciate anything we can do to not put them there.
I, I, I can fully understand that you are concerned by that.
Okay, sure, thank you.
So to follow our mission statement, you're saying that that might not be either environmentally or physically responsible? We're not in the power.
It's, yeah, that's the problem, is to underneath our formation doc, documents doesn't say anything about selling, about selling power.
Run the waste market.
Yeah, that's it.
Question real quick, are you currently selling power, are you producing more than you're using?
I'm not, uh, I don't sell power, I offset what I use, but it's almost.
More than you use?
Right now, I don't think we do, I think if it is, it's minor, um, and it's offset within a month or two, they give us credit for it.
So over the, over the.
We have a true net meter, we have a true net meter, so.
That's why.
Right, so the true net meter, the way the true net meters, at the end, they, they have, you know, we, we take our, the difference in the power that we produce, and I think it takes us, I think we have up to three months to take that power, um, and offset what we've.
So over the, over the course of the last two years, on your net, have we netted positive or netted negative? Have you netted positive or negative?
Uh, I think we've done both. And, and, well, what we've done with one year, we were negative, and one year we were positive, but again, we offset, so we don't actually sell power because we just get credit for it.
If you net positive, you're act, you would, you would actually sell power.
You know, I, I mean, last we're just trading for power then, I don't know that it actually, I mean, I understand, but there's a nuance between the way that the bar was formed, formed, like, if we were D W P, Department of Water and Power, we might be able to get away with that. Uh, but.
We're a P in Marw.
Yeah, there you go. There's a lot of P in Marw already, just so, yeah.
Looking at the check rosters for each month, usually you will see that there are tens of thousands of dollars still going to power company.
Okay.
So my guess is we are not overproducing.
So you're, you're netting negative? You're, you're in the negative, or are you on the negative?
Well.
Low money.
Figures right in front of me, I can't say yes or no, but like I said, it looks to me, we are saving money and then we produce electricity cheaper than we can buy it, but we are not producing enough that we can tell Bear Valley Electric to go concentrate, just.
I don't want you to do that in the state.
So, do I have a motion to, uh, authorize a gentleman to keep under any discussions?
Yeah.
Bob, Bob?
I have to be by my.
That's okay, yeah, maybe. It's an action line.
I would also like to see maybe round back at Bear Valley Electric also.
So, do what?
See if Bear Valley Electric would, I mean, if they're gonna have to be building. That's a side note.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you agreeable to that?
Yes.
She kind of amended it. You bet?
Okay.
Was that a second?
Yeah.
We already. My second Republican, but did I not?
Yeah.
Several times, actually. Okay, Steve.
Vice Chair Miller.
Aye.
Director Russo.
Aye.
Director Segovia.
Aye.
And Chair Walsh.
Aye. Ten D. Ten D. Ten D. It's not Ken Ham, but ten D. We're, we're full of jokes here. Doctor. Okay, so, um, for what the board has an opportunity to do is we've been approached by, I think it's the operations manager for Pineout Marina about some boat storage, apparently, and I don't know all the details and Sean probably does, but apparently there was boat storage happening at a different location in the city, and, um, the city chose to do something else with their property and said you can't store boats any here, anymore here. So they were looking for additional locations, they brought a couple of different opportunities to the city, I guess the city didn't really like those locations, one was on the boulevard, totally understand about that. So they, uh, chose to ask me about our site over here and putting them underneath the solar panels, which really good, um, I think Steve would really enjoy additional, sometimes boat, trailer, storage, uh, boat trailers, only trailers, storage underneath the, the, the solar panels, if you guys would rather entertain that, to brighten his day, we're welcome to do that. I had said probably not a good idea because we do have to do, or we don't have to do, the solar company has to do periodic, um, maintenance underneath those solar panels, so we chose not to entertain that idea, but offered up some additional property that we have at the end of Garston, and again, this is just to be a good neighbor, uh, additional property at, um, and to, and to help the city out, much out, help the city out. Um, to offer up some property at the end of Garston at our L P S. The, the lot from the pictures, you can see the lot is vacant at this point. Um, it is, there is some houses, um, that around our property, but again, it is a pond, there's a bunch of ponds out here for storing sewer and. Pond, there's a bunch of ponds out here for storing sewer and, uh, city has a bunch of other equipment out here. We have nothing, they are proposing to put these approximately between five and six months a year. Just the the trailer storage in a neat orderly fashion. Most of the property that they would put this on has, um, screening in the fencing. Um. Uh, I did ask, um, through channels, whether the city manager was okay with it. He, all his response was, um, you may receive complaints from.
Neighbors.
Neighbors, you're wrong, but just so you know, these are all rented properties. So they're in the private home rental business already, a- all the ones that are along our fence line. So I'm not sure if that plays a role, but it it does, we're talking about, you know, somewhere around that hundred. To, uh, uh, a hundred and twenty-five. Uh, trailers to be stored by, to five and six months out of the year. The agency would not be responsible for any permits, all the complaints would go to. Pine Knop Marina for any, to deal with any of those, um, we definitely would, uh, put something in the. Lease or lease, I guess it would be lease agreement, yeah, I guess it would be lease agreement, um, should the, um, neighbors. Protest the placement enough to make it uncomfortable that we have, uh, an opportunity to get out of the lease. And so I I don't think if it's not bad use of the property, because there's already. Lots of city equipment out in that area, um, actually, this whole area was flooded with, um. Fire arrest equipment in the past, um, and some other assorted boxes and that kind of stuff, so. Anyways, um, we, we have not received any complaints about that stuff, but again. I'm not sure what the city received on their end or their property. So it's up for consideration.
It's so hard to understand, this is the fence or maybe use.
It's an industrial, an industrial area, so.
So what about the zoning for that, that property?
That was open space.
It's, yeah, it's open space, so there's not, and it's a temporary use, so it's not really like, uh, you could, they could get a temporary use permit. Um, from the city if they, if maybe.
Well, I have strong feelings about this, um. You said, you know, being a good neighbor to the marina, I would argue you're not being a good neighbor to those houses down there. Uh, I went and looked at the property yesterday, and skinny through the fence and was looking. At the property. Be looking at the properties that it would back, and then I went on the other side of the street and looked through their fences and I just, um. It would not be being a good neighbor, I do know that a lot of the complaints, uh, their complaints go to the city. So it would be an opportunity where this city would get the, you know, the finger pointed at them. Um, and we have enough complainers right now, so, um, I I just feel strongly that it's. Not worth the game.
Said we get paid for?
Would would we get paid for? Yes.
So are we in the, are we into renting trailer space?
No, that's not the. You're helping, you're helping me, Steve, you're helping. Uh, no, we're not in that, uh, we're not in the business, but we're, you know, obviously, there's been a lot of storage out in this. Uh, in this facility, we finally actually had to approach. You know, the city and the fire department about moving some of the conics boxes and the equipment. And everything else that was on our property and says, hey, guess what, let's let's clean this up, um, and we've done that. Um, we have not, you know, obviously, our our property, you know, we we would get the complaints, but I understand the city would probably hear them first. And then we would, they would filter to us, totally understand, uh, I don't, I don't, again. You know, it's been quite a few years since I've been at the city, so I I, in the past, I received complaints, but it was more. Um. It was more of the equipment, a- at the time when I worked for the city, of the equipment and the bricks and everything else that we had in the pond area. But again, you know, this is, uh, it's up to the board to to consider if they want to. Look into a lease option with this, you know, for for temporary storage, and and I really, I don't know. You know, how the city feels about the, you know, about this location, but it at least it's not on the Boulevard and it's not. You know, there's not a whole lot of other space for this, this type of use, and so I I thought since it's behind those. You know, the fences with, most of it has flat, some of it doesn't. Um, and they're low lying, they're just about, it's about trailers, not about boats, and not about other equipment. I thought it's not, it's not a horrible idea, and so.
Well, and you mentioned the Boulevard too, uh, the city, we're gonna be working on a west end development project.
Yeah.
To try and clean things up.
Yeah.
Down at that end.
Yeah.
And so what would we do if, say, all of a sudden we tell Lauren Hayden that he can't park those boats out there anymore? Because they're right on the Boulevard, so what would we do if we get approached by other marinas in Big Bear? Wanting to now put blue covered boats on that property or more trailers on the property, how do you say no? When you said yes?
We could, uh, you know, that's definitely something to consider, obviously, if, you know, if there were other. Other agents, uh, other entities, companies looking, you know, for other opportunities to store their boats. I I know, um, that Holloway's does store a lot of boats on their property. You know, on the marina property during the winter, and I know that it was, there's some other property that they store boats, and a lot of it's been cleaned up. Um, and thankfully, it's been cleaned up and a lot of that's happened, I know during the summertime, the, um. What is that, Mountain, Magic Mountain? Does store boat, uh, trailers on their mountain where they have sleighing during the winter. But then they use the, they allow for boat storage up there, and I don't know who does that. Um, but that is a temporary use, so that's kind of along those lines, that's what brought my thought, oh, this is not a. Ten bag, temporary use for the property to house some, um, some boat trailers, so that's kind of like.
Well, and I think the city was only getting a few thousand dollars a year off of it, less than ten. And.
I'm sure this would be less than ten.
I just don't even think it, it just.
Doesn't.
Is it worth? Making more people upset, I mean, the homeowners there, a- around there already have a certain level of understanding. Snow goes in, equipment goes in, and why just add, you know, one more situation?
That's, yeah.
I just have one other, just. You know, Pine Knop Marina tried this. Ten years ago, up, uh, uh, the property was right below the crossroads of, for the Howler project, that city bought that, turned it into a party line. They walked away from it because the conditions placed on it and by the city was too expensive, didn't justify the move. Um, if this is a general plan amendment, I I, you know, I would just rather table this, maybe if the city could go back and, you know. I I just don't know if it's even economically feasible for them, unless they really want to put a lot of money in this site, this is not. I know, I know this is a germ wide, but this is not as easy as it looks from a planning standpoint, by the time you get down. Um, I think it's a block wall, I think this condition would be quite a block wall completely around the property. Then you have to deal with water quality, because you have gas, and then the boats.
No, just, just the trailers.
Just the trailers, okay, then, um. Okay, then if it's the trailers, you don't have that problem, but you still have to deal with. What the surface is going to be and how you're gonna control water, you know, still need, still water quality problem.
Yeah, there's, there's already drainage out there that goes into our pond, so that's, that's less of an issue with the water quality, but more. I I I totally understand, so like I said, it's, at the board's.
If it's a general plan amendment, I don't think it's worth it.
Because it's open space and it doesn't, uh, a temporary use permit wouldn't be. A temporary use.
Temporary permit's only good for two years. Yeah, and it's supposed to be, not that kind of use, but, yeah, a lot of it.
Again, that would be at the, you know, up to the. Yeah, up to the the city, I mean, up to the, um, developer.
Why am I?
Yeah.
I not related. Table of this information, or? I don't know. I can, I agree with, I agree with the city that it's a, it's a lot of effort on a piece of property, uh. And I just don't know with a bit of a pullback.
I I just think we should be a good neighbor also.
Yeah, I I I'm told, uh, again, just trying to. Be helpful.
And there was, um. There was another side of the south, it was up to the end of it too, but it was looked at at the one time, I don't know if the city's used here as that. It's very relevant location, this be the old guy, this little fire department, little fire department, article?
Yeah, it's owned by D W, it was owned, it's owned by D W P, I think, um. I think it's still owned by D W P, up on Sienna, uh.
Way at the end.
Way at the end of Sienna.
Cause Paradise.
Oh, you, oh, you bought.
As far as I know, it's in the name of the city Big Bear Lake.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, I think. I think either the city, the city owned it, or either, I think D W P owned, whatever, yes, but it's in the city Big Bear Lake's ownership.
Sean, I think the city approved it, and they never built it, it's just something to look into, it's all really old.
Yeah, it was a higher. They were gonna relocate the one that's at the, the, um. Yes, they're gonna relocate that and put it up there to install a foundation in that area.
And I mean, it sounds like it's a marina problem, not really a city problem, where they put their trailers.
It is.
Something the marina should figure out, maybe they need to, you know. Find some property someplace that they buy, I don't know.
Yeah, 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 I I mean, I totally understand, I I, again, I'm not pushing for any of that, just. Bringing it forward to the board, just like I brought the solar, just as a. Being approached.
As I was growing up, it was called Steel Will's Crystal Bowl, and what is the restaurant there? Out at the end, behind the trailer park.
Oh, oh, you're talking about, uh. It was, is it pine something or pine?
If you go sit there and go try and have lunch again, and you look out over all those Saran Wrap boats. Or even if you're driving by in the Boulevard, it's not very traffic. And so all of.
You don't like blue?
No. And they are blue, these are low profile, you can hardly see them, if I was a neighbor. I imagine I would not be too pleased to have this traffic in and out and kids playing and junk and.
Yeah, I mean, just sitting on there, there's no boats, so there's no blue, just trailers, jet trailers, low profile trailers, yes. But yes, they would be coming in and out, I mean, obviously, certain points of the year, they'd be coming more frequently than others, but yes. April and I would imagine in October, they would be, they would be free to crack up, loading up a hundred and fifty boat trailers. And and I'm breaking my heart with this, so whatever you guys wanna do.
I'll let you make a motion.
Do you wish to enter into it?
I make a motion that we not do this. Vice Chair Miller.
Hi.
Director Russo.
Hi.
Director Segovia.
Hi.
And Chair Walsh.
I don't know.
I do know.
Got it.
I do know.
Why in the lines?
Your comments.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanna thank everyone for coming and giving us our input, giving input to us. Yeah, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Just, I'll just say thanks for having me on the board and looking forward to making a positive contribution.
Thank you.
At times hard pressed to justify the expense of the sustainability project. And so I'm trying to be. Open minded and listen to all arguments, doesn't mean I agree.
Actually, I I I agree with Larry, and I have a, I think it's a good project. But I have a hard time with it being really on the backs of the property owners right now. Um, I actually, when this came before the city last year for the tax increase, I was the only one that voted no on it. But it doesn't mean I don't like the project.
Yes, I understand.
It's the expense, so.
There being no further?
Twelve twenty-five.
Twelve twenty-five, we are your.